Please.
Go call please.
Kenny David. Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Carol Zolti.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Here.
Fred Scott.
Here.
Any public comment?
Approval agenda.
Oh, need approval of the agenda. I always miss one, don't I?
It's just, uh, in the last call meeting, I talked about having a commissioner report.
You did talk about that.
And I, I think it was agreed upon.
Commissioner report what?
For each. Commissioner comment at the end of the meeting. Let the public have two chan- two chances.
Oh, you want commissioner comment?
Yeah, soapbox, soapbox time.
Okay. No public comment?
Case Wiltie wants to say something, you know.
I know. I'm just messing with you.
I miss your Wiltie.
I know, yeah.
Okay, do we have any commissioner comments?
No, no, at the end of the meeting.
Oh, you said no.
No, no, I said.
Going before or after six?
You could do the public now.
Six A.
So this is six A? Okay, no commissioner, no, okay. Any appointments?
No.
No. Discussion items, we have Sting, we have MCAG, we have jury board appointment, and we have the millage discussion. Bring this up, just a minute, I gotta light on my computer here. Okay, and this thing, they're, they're asking for money, are they not?
Ten thousand dollars.
Okay. Any just, you wanna make a motion first and then any discussion?
You know, I don't wanna motion on this tonight, if you do, then.
Oh, no, we don't tonight.
It's for discussion, this invoice came in, the last two years, uh, let's see, two years ago, we funded Sting with an ARPA allocation. Last year, we used opioid allocation to do that. The issue with the opioid, uh, using the opioid funds, we had to tie the, uh, funding to what was in what we have referred to as appendix E. And it talks in there about education of law enforcement, training, and so forth when it comes to opioids. Uh, rather than tying us down on that, I would suggest if we want to do the, uh, pay the dues invoice this year. Uh, I'll draw you back to a couple of meetings ago, when we were talking about the budget adjustments that we did for the second quarter. And the amount of interest we were receiving on the ARPA monies, and I would suggest if you want to do this, that we use interest in the ARPA fund to pay that, and that way it doesn't touch ARPA money, it doesn't touch general fund, it's just the interest that was unbudgeted, it's new monies coming in. Um, you know, it's proven to be a, you know, fairly valuable membership, I think, for the county, uh, but that's, you know, for you to discuss. And of course, the sheriff's here to discuss that too, but that's one way to continue our support, uh, without harming any of the other funds that we have already pretty well allocated.
I have a couple things. Uh, so I'm commissioner liaison with Sting, I tried to go to all the meetings since I've become commissioner. And we got a really good, strong group there, you know, Sting has done work throughout the county. Um, they continue to do work in, in Mills Township. Uh, so I think it's really important that we continue to fund them. I don't know if they're from Dundershire, you guys have anything you'd like to add to the Sting and the?
I, I think it's very vital, we definitely need to continue that, that's my, my take on it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and this, this thing actually has a new leader, um, Trooper Jordan retired, and they have a new leader that I met up in Ross' comment about a month ago. And I think he's gonna maybe try to come to a meeting, try to give you the one. Um, but again, I think it's very important that we, that we fund these, I do, I do have a question, so. So I understand with our opioid money, that when it comes to the enforcement side, it's a no-go. And last year, we did use opiate settlement money for this.
Right.
How, why can't we just go through the same channels and do that?
We could, uh, but then you're, you know, dipping into the opioid, uh, funding, which we're, obviously, we're still planning for. But the other thing that we'll do, and you'll read the resolution from last year, it tied the funding specifically then to education purposes for training, uh, so that we can then tie that back to that appendix E of the Jensen settlement, I think it's, uh, what it's tied to. If we do just simply interest, all right, again, revenue that's come in, that wasn't budgeted for anything, it really wasn't anticipated, uh, but again, thanks to the, uh, work of the treasurer, we are doing fairly well on the interest now. Using that earmarking, that additional dollar means that we're not dipping into anything that's in ARPA, that, that's sitting there, that's earning the interest. It's not getting into the general fund, it's not getting into opioid funding, it's free and clear, it's just for the dues membership. And it's not tied to education and training that way either, so if Sting needs it for, you know, equipment or something like that, it's, they're free to use it for that purpose.
Okay, so, so when we gave Sting the ten thousand dollars last year, you gave them a note that said this ten thousand dollars can only be used for educational purposes?
That's the intention was, and we listed what was in, uh, the appendix, it was right in the resolution, just cut and paste.
I'm sure that money goes into their general fund, and then they try to, I, the only reason I'm saying that it'd be nice, that interest money, I mean, we have a lot of structural things that we also wanna try to get done, things that could save the county money. So I'm kinda like, yes, we have what, four hundred thousand dollars in opioid settlement money right now?
Um, it's, it's, yes.
Right.
And four seventy-six that's in there.
And we know we're trying to create something that's gonna be lasting with that.
Right.
But yet also, you know, I think, I, I feel that it could come out of that, and that, that to me wouldn't bother me at all, I don't know what you guys feel on that.
Come on, what?
Out of the opiate settlement money.
I.
It was for education, I don't have a problem with that.
I agree, um, reading this letter here, the federal burn grant, uh, allows the unit to rent current office space, assist with salaries and fund part-time administration. It does not cover investigative expenses, training, detective vehicles or equipment, so they're, they're already telling us they could use training money. So I, I would, I would rather take it out of the opioid myself.
For training.
The only reason we took it out of ARPA was that meeting was only three of us here. And it was a two to one vote that we give ARPA, uh, give them ARPA money. Other than that, we said we weren't gonna go to outside agencies with ARPA money.
Yeah.
They got all voted that time.
Can you make a comment?
Yes.
I was just looking at interest income of what we've earned with our ARPA money, since the ARPA money was received. I don't have the exact figure with me, but I did look at it today from the beginning of when we received the funds through today. And it's slightly over a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in interest income on just the ARPA funds alone.
It's good to hear and let it compound.
No, we should put it towards our cash flow issue.
Well, we could, yeah, well, we could do that too.
I mean, that very well could be the case, absolutely, but.
But that, that would be something within our own ranks, that, that, that I'd rather see than, and then outside.
I have one more thing, yeah, I just wanna be clear on this, Tim, 'cause I mean, you, you've had the most research when it comes to the ins and outs of our opioid stuff, I mean, I'm there for the meetings and trying to get involved, but you're in there, I mean, it kinda seems like it was a little hesitation, is there a problem, or as long as we focus it on education, it's okay?
It, it's okay, and, um, again, uh, opioid is earning interest as well, I don't know if it's this level or not, it's probably in that neighborhood.
I just moved, I believe, either two hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand to Michigan class to earn a higher rate for you, so.
Okay.
You'll start seeing an increase.
So there is that in there too, I mean, it didn't come from the settlements, it's just interest that was earned, so, um, even if there was an issue, I think we've got it covered in terms of how we classify that revenue coming in. Um, and, well, my only hesitation would be that we're tying Sting's hands, we're saying you can only use this for the education and for, um, you know, training and, and, and education is what they do as well, you know, when they go into the community. Uh, but, that being said, I think we can make the argument that even in the opioid fund, if it's, uh, interest that's being earned, that wasn't really settlement dollars. Now, am I splitting a hair here? I don't know, maybe, but I, I don't think it's inappropriate to do that based on what I've read in that, uh, appendix.
Says on the invoice here though, it says, um, strike team investigating narcotics group, so it's for narcotics law enforcement services. That's exactly what it's for, it doesn't say training or anything, it says narcotics law enforcement services.
Well, well, we, that's what they're asking for.
Yeah.
Well, we may have to just go by the opiate rules and. I don't think they'll turn it down.
I just agree.
I mean, compared to, I've heard that township's given a hundred dollars and stuff, you know?
I know Mills Township, um, gives, well, last year they gave six thousand, but you know, we do have a more of a need. Then we actually had a, a business owner last year match that six thousand, which was fantastic.
Awesome.
I guess one concern I have though is, um, now on the other side of that, if it does tie the hands of Sting, where they really need it for, to make sure that the, you know, the, the team, when they're doing their raids and everything else, I mean, Sheriff, I know you can't answer that right now, but is that something that maybe we should talk to the new, um, John Richards about?
Well, we could, now, there's another element in the opioid settlement, and this is something that actually is coming also from the Attorney General's Office approving that. If this turned out to not be in the, you know, appendix E, uh, allowable uses, uh, the rules in, as far as the spending are concerned, is that up to fifteen percent of the dollars received off from those settlements, and they're the larger ones that we've seen so far, up to fifteen percent, um, going to other purposes is okay. So the rest of the eighty-five percent, we just have to serve and prove it's going to these appendix E, uh, programs. So if Sting, let's just say, uh, we learned through an audit that they only used half of it for education, for instance, well, okay, so that five percent would count toward that fifteen percent, sorry, that five thousand dollars would count toward that fifteen percent that isn't under that appendix E umbrella. But, like I said, and not to confuse this too much, there's enough interest being earned even in this fund, but we're saying we're not actually using settlement dollars to do that. It's for the good work of the treasurer, that we now have this additional money, we'll just pull it from that fund, and we'll just make sure that we keep our audit trail, so if we are ever asked, we can prove that. In fact, because it's its own fund, we could even reserve it, yeah, you know, designate those, uh, uh, interest dollars for that type of purpose.
To the treasurer, interest funds, they're going, like, the ARPA's going into the ARPA fund, right?
Yes.
So the interest on the opioid be going into opioid fund, right?
And I'm sorry, I don't know exactly how much interest.
That's, that's fine.
On that fund, I don't know if it's hit ten thousand yet, in interest income on that fund, yeah.
So I mean, they need to train, so I can't imagine they wouldn't spend ten thousand dollars a year in training. So then whatever everybody else gives, they can use them to bring in the bad guys. And then with this one, if you could train them, I would do that.
But, and it can go to, um, things like the Narcan, so if they need, of course, I don't know that they have to pay for that now anyway, but anything that has to do with, um, it's specifically toward the opioids would qualify, and again, given what they do, I don't think it's gonna be very hard to show that.
Yeah.
Like ten thousand dollars, a lot of money considering where we are right now.
Yeah, well, that's why I wanna make sure it doesn't actually touch our general fund, or touch any of the dollars that we have designated.
Well, and I think our, our, um, ARPA money should be taking care of some of these problems we have with some of these buildings and maintain them. Otherwise, we're not gonna be left, nothing left to maintain. I mean, it's been a long time, you know, it seems like we maintain everything else except the county building.
So we're, we're good with using the opiate money first thing?
That'd be my move.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be my move too.
All right, well, let's get that on.
Sounds good.
Get on, uh, next.
Okay.
Next week.
MCAG membership. I guess I'm a member, right?
You're the rep?
I guess I am.
So shall we get a membership so you can go?
Can you confirm one more time on the price, 'cause there's been?
Yeah, that what they've settled on is twelve hundred dollars, uh, for the year. I did ask Ryan to come to the meeting tonight to talk about how, um, the membership might affect planning and zoning, how they might benefit from it. Um, based on the information that they've given us, and we've had it over the last few meetings. Um, his operation seems to be the one that is, uh, probably best suited to take advantage of the membership, but I, again, I'm not familiar enough with MCAG to know just exactly how that might work. And Ryan and I, Steel of Thunder, a little bit, have already talked about it, and they do have additional fees also. If, for instance, Ryan asks them to prepare a plan, there probably would be a cost still, even though we're a member, but maybe we get a member discount, but I don't know, we can let Ryan talk about that directly.
There's Ryan right there.
Yeah, so, that's, if you wanna call him up.
Ryan?
Take the hot seat.
I did do a little bit of looking into it, um, MCAG actually, they do a wonderful job, and they actually offer a lot of planning services for communities. Um, they do master plan updates, zoning ordinance updates, they'll do recreation plans, and they'll do a lot of other stuff for, for counties, cities, townships, and villages. Um, but the one thing that I, I did find out is those, those don't, those don't come for free as part of your membership, so. Um, your membership will get you a reduced rate on a lot of those, a lot of those services. Um, I did contact, I did talk to another community, um, that recently had a, um, master plan, they're, they're working on a master plan update. Um, the cost of them is sixty-eight hundred dollars.
How much?
Sixty-eight hundred dollars for the master plan update. They've done some stuff in the past, um, master plan and a full ordinance, zoning ordinance review, the cost of that was, um, after receiving a grant that paid for half of it, the, the portion that they were responsible was over twelve thousand dollars, so. They have a lot of planners, they have a lot of, they have a lot of, I've looked at a lot of these plans that they've done, and zoning ordinance that they're, they've done, they're wonderful, they know what they're doing. Um, and, and they're great, they're just.
Well, if they're high on opiates, we could spend some of that money.
Something they, so they, they definitely, it's a professional service, and they do charge for that, so.
Yeah.
In addition to your, your members, your yearly membership.
And how, what's yearly membership, twelve?
Twelve hundred. Would you like to go to their meetings?
To the MCAG meetings?
Yeah.
I wouldn't be opposed to it, no.
Could we make him the representative?
I'm not familiar enough with their bylaws to know if you can or not, but you would buy a representative with this?
Yeah, we send them twelve hundred bucks, I think we can send anybody we want, right?
At one point in time, I thought the county actually had members on that board.
Brenda.
Brenda, I know, but I did see something that showed Ron Quackenbush was on it at one point in time.
Yeah, he was committing, yeah.
Yeah.
So I was kinda surprised to, to see that, but I couldn't see who currently is on that board from where they're from and.
Well, right now, it's Brenda, and she's got so many other things going.
Yeah.
What, would you like to be our representative?
Where, where do they only?
Meanwhile, I think they.
I can, I can get that information.
I think it goes around, I think it moves around.
Around, but I think like Gladwin, uh, Claire.
It's possible.
I can get you that information when the meetings are, and I get to kind of contact also.
Yeah.
Okay?
And I would add this.
From the boss, I'll be okay.
They can tell me that.
Well, come to next week's meeting, and we'll know.
Um, keep in mind, this conversation started at the request of the Housing Committee, because they do have, again, some expertise there that we could possibly tap into. At our last meeting, we were talking a lot about grant writers, they have grant writers, they're familiar with MISTDA. Um, again, I'm sure it doesn't come without cost, but we are truly starved for expertise, uh, with the Housing Committee right now, and I think just about anybody that we could tap through this.
Ryan, just about anybody.
Yeah.
He's everybody.
Anybody and everybody.
Yeah, the only problem I have, you know, this stuff is gonna cost money, we don't have money right now. And, um, that, that's my drawback on this whole thing, you know? We haven't, we haven't had a representative lately, and we're still alive.
For quite a few years, we haven't had a rep.
Yeah, and we're still alive. I would say maybe we delay this and see how things go, and then make the decision to be a member now a little bit later, that, that's, that's my position. I don't wanna rush into it, 'cause we don't, we don't have the money.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, of course.
Um, could we use the, the money that's been, the interest that's been made off ARPA, twelve hundred dollars?
I'd like to use the interest made off, uh, ARPA, fix that building.
Well, I do too, but, I mean, there are some things going on right now that, you know, for example, the Housing Committee, and I wish I could say I have a stronger, um, stance and feel right now of where we need to be, and I don't, because we're not really getting the information that we thought we were gonna get, and I'm not trying to make excuses. But, I mean, a little bit of information that could help us really start building, I mean, a matter of think about a couple houses being built, and the property taxes generated from two new houses. I mean, if we, twelve hundred dollars for one year, and if we keep, you know, keep our finger on the pulse with it, and, and, you know, really be able to see what we get out of it. And if we use interest-made money, we're not touching anything from the general fund.
Well, just going from building department, they have put out a lot of building permits on houses, just eight recently. So.
How about?
I don't think putting houses in the area is, is, is an issue right now as far as people go, for, for, if you're talking low-income houses.
Talking about affordable, yeah, affordable housing.
So.
And I, I think probably you found in your housing, you're, you need housing at every level, low-income, medium, and probably the higher, higher levels as well too, it's just, um.
How about Brenda, you go to, go to a meeting and, and scout them out and see if.
That sounds like a good idea, maybe we go together someday.
I think that.
Next meeting, and the reason I, the reason I'm saying that is that, you know, it's a great organization, they blah, blah, blah. But, you know, when they do something for you, it's gonna cost us money, sixteen thousand dollars here, eight thousand dollars there, sixteen, we don't have that money.
Well, I mean, but we gotta be realistic here, that's for a master plan for, I mean, those numbers, that's for a master plan for a, a city, right?
Yes.
I mean, a master plan, that is so detailed, we're not looking to get a master plan or anything done right now.
Well, we can find out, we can find out when we go.
Right, and even your membership privileges might get you access to just being made aware when these grants and things are available, or if there are grants, or, or, or things available. I know the one community said it was a, it's in, it was a, um, an MEDC grant that they received, over twelve thousand dollars were to help pay for it. Just knowing about those things is pretty critical as well, so.
Well, Ryan and I go to the next meeting, we'll see, we'll come back.
Do you have any idea when the next meeting is?
No, but I will find out by tomorrow, believe me, back time I even know tonight.
Okay.
That sounds good to me, you can ask them what we're gonna get.
And I don't feel bad, I don't have to write by myself. That's sometimes a long drive. Okay, so we're set on that, and I'll go, thanks, Ryan, thanks so much. Okay, jury board appointment.
Yep, so I received a resignation letter from one of the jury board, um, commission members last week, and by statute, there needs to be no more than two of the same party on the board, we already have two Democrats, the board's made up of three people. Um, the one who resigned is a Republican, so I reached out to the Republican Party chair, asked her to reach out to the Republican Party to get a nomination. She sent me, um, Maria Piranin, um, Maria filled out the application, sent it in, uh, very quick turnaround, but, um, I think she would do a great job on it, she is on our Board of Campers, so she already knows how we work.
What's her name, please?
Maria Piranin.
Oh, Piranin, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so the, in the packet that I, that I submitted to Tim, is the, the first letter that's on my letterhead is judge's signature. He, by statute, he has to be the one to give you guys a recommendation, and then you guys would appoint her next week. So we pushed off doing all the qualifications of the jury letters that were supposed to start this week. Um, we pushed that back so that we could get this new appointment before they come in.
This what I hear is just saying that somebody left.
Yeah.
And we don't have a letter yet about going to the judge about signing someone else.
It's all included, everything's there.
No, the judge's letter is here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, I got it.
So her application's in there, the letter from me to the judge with his signature on it, saying approving, um.
Letter from the party.
So we go down to next meeting, yes?
Yeah.
We need to put that on the agenda for next meeting. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you, guys.
Millage discussion.
Um, can I say something real quick?
Yes, you can.
I printed these late this afternoon, but this is all of the millages that are filed for August, the wording, everything. So you have, and then I, on the back part of it, uh, at the library, and then the Hail Area Schools, I had put, what townships they. Thank you. You're welcome.
I have a question to ask. So the Hail Area Schools, and that's Hill and Logan Townships, right?
Not all, not the entire township.
But part of it.
But part of it.
Okay, part.
Yeah.
Part of these. Kinda like Gladwin County.
Yeah.
For us, and for the West Branch Road City Schools, it's all except Richland Township?
Correct.
And that's all of Richland Township?
Correct.
All of them.
They're only Winnebago Prescott.
What about Mills?
Yeah.
They don't have Hale.
No.
I'm talking about West Branch Road City, you have all except Richland Township.
Is not Mills split?
Oh, the, it is split, correct, yes, you're right, I'm sorry, I didn't miss that, yeah. Yep, there's one of the, uh, precincts.
Right.
Precincts.
Part of Mills.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. The only reason I knew that, 'cause I used to be commissioner. And for the library, it's, um, City of West Branch, Edwards, Foster, Horton, Ogama, and West Branch Township. Thank you, this is nice to have, thanks, Brack, I really appreciate it. So everybody can take a, take a, take a look at that, and there's, um, those township, there's three township proposals, and for Rose Township, there's three township proposals, so. Fire, fire, and Gypsy Moss, but no.
Yes.
And, um.
Yeah.
Vote improvement and fire department for Rose Township. Gypsy Moss, yeah. And there'd be, you know, three county ones, am I correct on that?
Four.
What are you looking for?
Four countywide, plus the school, which is almost countywide.
Yes.
Plus the library, which is.
A few townships, yeah?
Yeah. A third.
Yeah.
Can I get a copy of that too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Here, here, one.
Great, gives us an overall picture of.
Of, um. It will, um.
And it's correct.
Yeah.
That's the main part.
This is what is submitted to the state, um, I did call the Bureau today, just to get clarification, um, if anybody wanted to take off a millage for the August election. I just need to know before the ballots go to print, which will probably be in two to three weeks. Otherwise, this is what the millages look like. And if any are taken off, it has to be put, put on in the same, well, taken off the same way they were put on, so they would have to have a meeting, a resolution, and turned in to me before I get the, before the ballots are printed.
Comment.
So right now, there's.
Please.
West Branch Township, library, plus these three on the front page.
Countywide.
Countywide is the three that are on the front page, is my understanding, Commission on Aging, Public Transit, and Veterans.
And, um, EMS equipment. And um EMS equipment.
Where's the EMS equipment? I don't see it.
That one.
Yeah, you're right.
Should it be?
It should be.
Is that countywide?
Yeah.
Like going on right now, I missed up, you missed up, that's why we have all these heads sitting at this table.
Yeah, I think we just need that one added. Is, I was questioning, has there been some comment of, or from? Action form for possibly a move.
There was just discussion about there being a lot voter exhaustion again, yeah, so I just, I wanted to do my homework before. It even got asked. This could be countywide millage also, so. On August, I haven't heard anything, just. That. There's more than the word for May.
And now there's two more, is it?
So that's weird because it's in here, but it didn't print.
Two EMS and.
EMS, yeah, I will uh, I will email you guys a new one tomorrow after I figure out why it's not on there.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about this? Any comments, any more comments? Okay. Thanks for your comments.
Well, we're better than halfway through our budget. How's budget committee doing, and is there any money we can save? I guess I'm asking.
The reason.
You and Wiltsey.
Right, I understand, and um.
I mean, can we save anything in the last half?
Well, we'll be discussing that on um, May, is it June?
June.
June. June fourteenth, that's the next budget meeting. So, no more than, because we'll, I'll be discussing also with the. County Administrator. And see what. He's got. On the, on the budget and where the budget stands at that point in time. I know, I got you, Craig, I got you, Craig, so, yeah, so. And then Commissioner can talk to the county administrator, of course, to find out, you know. Where we stand right now, and we'll pray, we can discuss it prior next meeting also. Yes, next week, rather than waiting till June. It wouldn't be the budget committee, it'd just be us commissioners right now. Um, unless we have a budget committee earlier than that.
Yeah, if you could not discuss next week because I'm gonna be missing next week again.
Over the night, well. But we, he's gonna be gone, you know.
He'll be gone, I got it, I don't know how I started doing that. But now it's, now it's brought to the front, front, frontline here, I'll try not to do that anymore.
It's good.
But that we. I at least say, imagining on our next budget committee meeting, there's gonna be a number of things that we're gonna have on the table to begin that discussion in earnest. Um, and that that's even just prior to when departments are asked to start putting budgets together, so I think we'll have good information for departments as well. Moving forward, and I can just comment on the quarterly adjustments we did at the halfway point of the year. Uh, it does appear that um, difficult decisions you had to make. Uh, last September are in fact um, working uh, with the budget, so we're sitting. A little bit better than I thought we would be right now, which is good, but we have half a year to go, yeah, so let's not, you know, get too overconfident. But it it does appear that those uh, actions you took are are beginning to bear fruit, so.
So, um. To discuss the villages. Since we're discussing villages. Um. My, my position, um, and I said that at the beginning when the headley went on there. It's like a one and done, and I failed two to one, and I still believe. One and done, I'm not willing to put the headley back on again, I think it'd be a fruitless effort. And uh, we'd accomplish absolutely nothing. I don't know what your feelings are, but that's. Listening to the people.
Well, we asked them, they said no.
Yeah, so I think one and done, no more headly.
I think if we were in a different position overall, just financially, not only um. Countywide, but um, just people, everyday life, you know. We could possibly maybe look into doing some type of sunset with it, we're, I don't know, but. I think right now, with everything going on and these really important villages in August. We can't ask for anything more or do anything more, we just gotta. Hope that the residents see the importance of these, these entities and and, you know, we can get the villages to pass.
Well. It it is tough right now and um. That's why with the countywide millage for this one, I'd say. No, because it's, people don't understand it, number one. Yeah, they think it was eight point five mills and it's not. And um, a lot of people just don't plain don't understand it. I'd say it'd be fruitless to put it on there again, and uh. Commissioners and uh, Mr. Dolehanny have been around to township meetings and explained it and as, answered a lot of questions and. It's still went down two to one, so.
But it wasn't just that one, you know.
No.
Failed, landed.
No, I know, but this one.
Yeah.
Failed, failed.
Oh, yeah.
Some of the others were very close.
Yeah, but.
The school was very close and um. The library is pretty close, those two are very close. So. Any more comments about villages? Any more comments from commissioners? It's Craig.
Oh, I see.
Mr. Wiltsey.
Um. Yeah, I kinda like that we're doing this each week now, um. Me and Paul, Paul's chairman of the EMS, we just left our EMS board meeting over there. And uh, we started the meeting off something really special a while back, I don't know the exact date, but a a two-year-old. From a county, county resident, a two-year-old drowned. And state police were the first on the scene, and then of course, our Ogama County EMS was was next, and there was a bunch of people involved. But they were able to save that boy's life, they brought him back, um, so it was super cool. Our, our new leader there, Justin, got some certifications done, these really cool little uh. Pins, like, like it's like a pin. Yeah, we call in, the state police were there, um, oh, um, of course dispatch has evolved with that, so. Dispatch rep- representative was there, a couple of the EMS from Ogama County was there, it was just really, it was really neat moment, so we, we did that and. We had our normal board meeting, um, but it was pretty, it was really cool to see that and have everybody there. And then um. The other item I wanted to talk about, uh, on the next NTA meeting is this month. And it is gonna be on Tuesday, May twenty eighth. At six PM, so it's the day after Memorial Day, and that's gonna be at Clacking Township. And it's at six PM, and the EDC. Um, is gonna be one of the main talking points there, some EDC members.
Okay.
Including myself, we'll be discussing some things regarding EDC there. Excuse me, I haven't on my calendar, thanks for reminding us. Um, do you have anything, Mr. Mayhew?
I have a couple of comments I'd like to make, um. Excuse me, I went to a transit meeting this morning. And we have a, a new publication out here for transit fees on different routes, and it's very nice. Explains it, and then in here, it has the maps where different areas are, and here it is, kinda like a. A map you have here, it says if you live in the zone blue team and you wanna go clear to yellow team. It's, it's three dollars to do that, or if you wanna go from Lepton to. City, dollar and a half. So, and we're gonna be putting these out at different places, so uh, people can see what the, what the new uh. What the new fees are, and it starts June third, so it's not effective right now, but we wanna give everybody heads up.
You put one right there.
In fact. Yes. You made it up, so you have it. But if anybody ever would like to have one of these. Please don't hesitate. Pass these on to everybody, please, thank you very much.
Putting some in the lobby.
Um.
Great, they printed twenty five hundred.
Great.
Yeah.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Do you wanna talk about the fly-in quick and then also the, that we're having the ribbon cutting, as we'll start, we, we know the dates, so we can start.
There's gonna be a flying at the airport on. June. I have to find my little notes here, June fifteenth, yeah.
June fifteenth, sorry.
And uh. The transit will also be there passing out the, these brochures, so people know uh, what the new fees are and, and the different roads are. And uh. We'll be discussing that. And then we're gonna have a, was it July, right?
July, Thursday, July eighteenth.
Eighteenth, we're gonna be having a ribbon county at the transit building for the new building that's opening, so. Drivers won't have to brush all the snow off and the transit bus, spend an hour doing that before they even get on their route. And we're gonna have a, a place to wash the vehicles also, so they last longer, because we cannot buy those aluminum ones anymore. So, you know, aluminum rust, the new ones are. Rustable, no other, so. It's nice that we'll have that, to keep all that salt and stuff off there when the drivers come in, and. Just goes around the bus, washes all that stuff off, so the buses stay in good shape. Anything we missed there?
No, that was good.
So. So the fly-in should be fun uh, at the airport. It's an annual event, there will be.
Breakfast.
Pancake breakfast.
Pancake and sausage.
Yeah, so I will be there to get my pancakes, you don't want me to make the pancakes, but I could pour orange juice. So, that's my best.
I just sent you guys all the updated, I got it figured out.
Thank you.
So you all have it.
Thank you.
I sent you one too.
Thank you.
So, and I have, so yeah, it's June fifteenth, and I have a little flyer here, we could probably post it at the county building, so everybody walks in there, can see it. So, and it's a fun time for the kids especially, so. Anybody else, commissioners?
I'm all set, uh, do you want a motion now to call it a closed session?
Yeah, public comment.
Yes.
So.
Oh, public comment, that's right, public comment. Any public comment? Any Zoom want a public comment? Anybody in the room, public comment? No public comment. Okay, we need a motion to go into closing.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session under MCL one five point two six eight. One C.
Copy, personnel, what's the reason?
Uh, personnel.
Personnel.
Collective bargaining. Collective bargaining, yeah, C is, I believe, collective bargaining.
Thanks.
They'll check that.
That's legit, that's legit.
Yeah, yeah. They used to check, they used to check it before.
I second that.
Yeah, they wanna put somewhere there, we got a bunch of them. I mean, I've got a whole stack of them at home.
We got, we got a motion to second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I can do a roll call.
All opposed.
I think.
We have to do a roll call?
You are.
Roll call.
Uh, Mayhew.
Yeah.
Simmons.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Wiltsey.
Yes. We have to get with Tom on.
Matt.
We need a motion to come back into open session.
Yeah, I'll make a motion and we come back into open session.
Mayhew, seconds, you have a roll call on this one or no?
Wiltsey.
Yes.
Craig, Scott.
Yes.
Roger Simmons.
Yes.
Roger, Mayhew.
I would make a, make a motion to approve a resolution. Um, I don't have a resolution number here, but approved resignation agreement, agreement settlement waiver claims.
I have support.
My roll call vote on this?
Absolutely.
Yeah, you need a roll call vote on this? Any discussion? Already discussed, roll call please.
Roger, Mayhew.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Travis Wiltsey.
Yes.
And I'll make a motion real soon.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Call the Herald, tell him.